Okay. Hello, welcome everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started, but please do keep coming in and signing in because there are all three of us here. This is an open business meeting. So, thank you so much for coming to this lunch and learn. While we didn't provide a full lunch, Elizabeth has graciously gone and procured some chip cookies, so please take advantage of that. We really felt it was important to have you join us to hear a conversation that we've been engaging with, with community members and fellow jurisdictions around the county. And just to give you a sense of why we're doing this, as many of you know, growth is a hot topic. Property taxes happen to also be a very hot topic. And this presentation's really going to kind of tie those two together and talk about sort of where we are, what are some of our challenges as it relates to growth and maintaining our services for the future, and then thinking about how we can be proactive as we go forward as a county and work with our fellow jurisdictions, perhaps to bend some of that cost curve so we can keep delivering on those services. So with that, I'm going to invite Mitra Metta Cooper to come up and start the presentation. She's going to give you an overview of how we're thinking, what we've been doing, and then we'll do some Q and A with all three commissioners at the end. And I suspect we may also do what I call, call a lifeline from some of you in the audience who certainly are affected by our growth in services and needs around the county.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner LaGiando for taking the lead on this initiative. It's been a lot of work and Mitra and Meg, the staff members have been out and about in the community and really rallying the community folks out there and bringing people together. I know it's been a lot of work and just really wanted to appreciate that. Okay?
Thank you very much. Tony, Tony works in the front as a security personnel. And one day, as I was coming in, Tony said, "Thank you ma'am." And I'm like, "Thank you for what?" And he's like, "For your work on growth." And I'm like, "Wow." Well, that credit goes to these three who have really taken this issue in their hand and ran with it. But he went on to say that he really appreciated that Ada County was taking a leadership role in that, and he was very proud to be part of this county as a result of that. And in that moment, I realized, "We need to have this. We really need to have this lunch and learn so that all the county employees can learn about what we are doing because I know that growth is impacting our lives personally and growth is impacting our life professionally." So I thought it was a good time to come in front of you and talk about the growth. But before I talk about the growth, let me talk a little bit about what we really love about Ada County. When we did our comp plan in 2016, Ada County 2025, some of you were part of that process, what we learned is people love the vast open spaces in Ada County. Half of our county is actually in federal and state lands, which means for a long time in the future, it is going to remain open space. And more than 8,000 acres are improved for recreational open spaces, which we all enjoy as trailheads and mountain biking and horseback riding and so on and so forth. So it's really important for all of us to recognize that this is something that is core to Ada County and its quality of life. The next issue that people love about Ada County is it's a safe place to raise family. I feel safe letting my five-year-old play in the front yard thanks to many of you in this audience, sheriff, coroner, juvenile, EMS, and so on and so forth. Public safety personnel in Ada County comprise of half of our workforce, and you know, they are the ones that are really the backbone of the safe feeling that we all have in this county. And not to forget the housing options. You can live in a 20-story building condo downtown, or you can stay in a ranchette, and all of it is within half an hour of each other, which means all our various generational needs are met and we are all within half an hour as a family. This is really awesome for a region. As a planner, I can tell you, this is something we look for in any region of this nation. But as you must have seen, this is changing fast. Our roads are getting crowded and it's taking us longer to reach to work, and our open spaces are getting chopped up into suburban sprawl very fast. As a result of that, when Boise State did the fourth annual survey, and they have been doing this over the last four years, that number has gone from 50% to 75%, which means that the angst against growth is increasing in the region. And we, as a county, need to respond to that, and I'm glad that the board recognizes that. So let's talk about a little bit about Ada County's service portfolio and what we do in Ada County. We are providing services out of 32 county facilities, and we occupy over 1.2 million square feet of office space. So we did the master facilities plan, and many of you have seen me geek out on that project. I'm going to start on this one too pretty soon. But in the master facilities plan, what we learned is where our facilities are, they are sized very appropriately to where the population centers are in Ada County. And when we did the master facilities plan and did the long-term planning to meet the 2040 needs of county facilities, what we learned is our planning was also based upon where the population centers were envisioned by Compass, a regional planning entity. And what I found really interesting in that process of master facilities plan was most of the services that we were providing, we were providing it to the entire Ada County, cities as well as unincorporated Ada County people, residents. And vice versa, they were paying taxes that were paying for some of our services also. So you know, it was very critical in my mind at the point that, you know, we really need to work with cities in finding a solution to this. We also learned, and some of you may have felt this personally, that our facilities were really overcrowded, were putting our employees in closets. And in this instance, this is at a public safety building where, you know, literally they have made room in the storage area for employees, but this is a reality. I had an intern recently who was cubicle sharing with somebody else, and we had to manage their times accordingly because of the space issues. And we have heard plenty about this, so I'm not going to dig that one deeper. Okay, now Mitra's planning geek is coming out. Get ready. So in 2000, when I look at this region, we were one big city and a series of small hamlets around it. Kuna was a city far from Boise. That's not the reality in 2019. We are a big metro now. We went from 300,000 people to 500,000 people. And now the geeky part. In 2012, Compass did the 2040 growth forecast for the region, a regional planning entity. And what they learned is what is shown in the orange man. In other words, you know, Compass had envisioned for Ada County that we are going to have 674,000 people in 2040. But as they have monitored the development activities since, that number has already gone to 689,000 people, which means that when we did the master facilities plan in 2018, we have undersized our facilities by 15,000 people almost. And this is how fast the growth is occurring, and we need to stay ahead of it. Okay, so as I mentioned, the first map on this side is the Compass's 2040 growth forecast. And when we did master facilities plan, we projected our facilities to meet this forecast. And you can see, you know, our facilities are located very critically in the right locations, and we'll be able to manage the 2040 growth very well. Now, does anyone know what a comp plan is? I know I have many planner friends here in the room. Does anyone want to say what a comp plan is?
I will. Talk about a plant. So a comprehensive plan is essentially the land uses that any city or county is projecting for their area. So when the city of Boise or the city of Meridian look at a map and they say, "We're planning on this area to be residential, this area to be commercial, and at these and these and these densities."
Thank you very much, Commissioner. So what this map shows, the second map on the screen shows is that comp plan build-out for Ada County. And you can see that the numbers go off from 674,000 people for which we have done the facilities planning to 1.5 million people. And the challenge here is that every day, when the board meets in the board chamber and city council meets in the city council rooms, they are making decisions based on their comprehensive plan. They are not looking at the Compass's 2040 forecast and saying, "Is this what is planned?" In other words, our transportation network and our facilities are planned for this map, and we are making day-to-day development application decisions based on the other map. And so there is the disconnect, and that's why the 15,000 people discrepancy that you saw in the prior map. So now let me put it in the dollar signs for Ada County. When we did the master facilities plan, we learned that we have a capital need of $320 million in 2018 dollars. If the region continues to grow the way it is growing and it builds out according to its comprehensive plan, that number can go up to $690 million in 2018 dollars. So this is the challenge. You know, our total budget is not $300 million. We don't have this $320 million to begin with, let alone the 690 million. So we really need a solution as a region. But what I forgot to mention on this slide is, we have certain services that are just impacted by sheer number of growth. You know, just because people are coming, we are going to need more courts. Just because people are coming, we are going to need more jail spaces. But that's not true for EMS stations. When we have to build an EMS station, it has to go where the people are because the response time has to meet. And so what that means is all the services that are on the top are the services that are, if I can use this, that are impacted by sheer growth. But this is what is really impacted by the location of growth. So if a city makes an application approval in middle of nowhere, it impacts our bottom And this is just one of the many services that gets impacted, EMS. And we just put in, "Thank you, Steve, for those numbers." Thank you. We just put in a slide to show you what that means. Anytime a city puts a development application in the middle of nowhere, that means we need 300, almost $2.25 million in capital needs and almost, you know, 675 for operational. Now, even with an impact fee, we can recover some of the capital costs. We can't recover any of the operational.
Pause on this because there's a lot of confusion in the community about impact fees, and they've heard that we are starting on this process. And what people have to understand is that the impact fee statute that is controlled by the state is very, very specific. So we can't just suddenly, you know, levy thousands and thousands of dollars for impact fees. It's a very drawn-out process with complicated rubric to figure out what is the cost of growth. And really, most importantly, impact fees can only pay for buildings or infrastructure. They cannot pay for what in many ways, as you all know, is kind of the hardest nut to crack, which is that ongoing operations and maintenance. So, and I will sort of hear this out and about in the community, say, "We'll make the developers pay for it." But even once we get to that impact fee piece, it only pays for this part. Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you. So, but when it comes to Ada County residents, courts and jail and coroner, and those are not the only services that are important to their quality of life. Roads, sewer, water, schools, all of these are even more important than, you know, courts or hopefully, we don't have to use those that often, but schools, we do have to drop our kids off every day. So you know, there is a direct relationship to all the services that are needed for quality of life that are not in Ada County or not governed by Ada County. And therefore, we worked with Compass, a regional planning entity, again, on a fiscal impact analysis. Mitra geeks out again. Be prepared. In 2013, they issued this nationwide publication called Building Better Budgets, and in which they talked about how much of it is the growth is affecting the local budgets. And what they learned was of the $1.6 trillion nationwide, $525 million were what we could control as land use authorities, because it's how we are growing is affecting that $5.525 million, which means almost one-third of our budget can be changed if we grow in a little bit different way than how we are growing currently. And you can see that the capital is only a small piece, as Commissioner LaGiando mentioned. The bigger piece is the operational cost of that. So what the fiscal impact analysis will do is, it will really tell us whether the growth is paying for itself or not. And in addition to the capital cost which growth may pay for, it would also tell us what is the operating cost of providing the services that I listed before for entire region. And in the end, it will tell us if we have a net surplus as a region, I heavily doubt, or a net deficit. I think that's what we are going to learn. But that work is currently underway, and we are expecting the first set of results by June of this year. In addition to that, as I mentioned earlier, this is not Ada County's initiative, and we cannot just do it by ourselves. We have to work with all our regional partners, the six cities, Ada County Highway District, many business organizations, nonprofit organizations that are working in the region, as well as our residents. On October 16th, we kick-started this process at the regional platform and had convened basically the entire leadership of Ada County, as well as invited the people of the community and talked about the growth-related issues that I'm talking to you today. And now we are in the process of working with the neighborhood associations to make sure that they understand that what is happening with growth in Ada County and what we are trying to do going forward. We are also working with Boise State and other universities to make sure that people understand the legal parameters within which we do land use planning in this area, because many a times, I was surprised, as a planner, I must admit, there is so much legislative framework restrictions that our ability to plan ahead is severely stifled by that. And therefore, I believe that the education series will really put in place some clear understanding amongst our decision-makers about what it is that we can do in Idaho and what it is we can not do in Idaho to manage this growth. And then, most importantly, getting the numbers. So with that, I'll open it up for questions and answers.
All right. Who has their first question? All right. Let me do some additional, yeah. So I used to be a university professor, and I will call on you if you don't ask a question, just saying. And those are the ones that are sitting in the back, for sure, Steve Bartlett. So I just want to say that we've been doing this roadshow now for about two or three months, and it's been really remarkable going around and visiting with all the cities, the mayors, the council people, our legislators, different groups, and listening to sort of where they are in terms of their land use challenges. And one of the things that really struck home to me was that some of these smaller communities, they don't have the resources and they don't have the professional staff that we do, and they're really feeling like there's not a lot that they can actually do to slow down growth in their areas. We don't have a public facilities ordinance. And so when Commissioner LaGiando was talking about the comprehensive plans, those are plans, but they don't have legal teeth to them. They're not binding, legally binding. And so we were finding that a lot of these folks just felt like, on their level, they had to just kind of rubber stamp projects that they were coming through, even though they didn't think that they may be in the best interest or they may be fiscally, you know, fairly expensive for them to do because they would leapfrog over other areas and services are not there. So for example, EMS, they'd have to build an EMS station because we want to keep our response times down to nine minutes or less. The sheriffs, the challenge is there as well. And so we're going to be looking at doing some things in terms of not only the fiscal impact analysis and giving them this predictive analytic tool that then the public can actually get empirical data and see, "You can build over here, it'll cost you this, or you can build over here, it'll cost you this amount." So that's going to be really helpful for these smaller communities. We want to help them do that. And in addition, we're going to be looking at, hopefully, role modeling by having our own adequate facilities ordinance. Right now, we are really not being able to make decisions on water. We have wells that are showing up toxic with high levels of uranium. Because we don't have this ordinance in place, we can warn folks, but we really don't have a lot of legal backbone to be able to say, "You know what? We're going to have to wait on this development until you have adequate facilities in place," whether that's water, that sewer, that EMS services, highways, or whatever. So we're working on that as well. But the big, I think the key to all of this really working is trust in building these relationships with other elected officials. Other groups have tried this in the past, and they started down the road back in 2008 with the Blueprint for Good Growth. And then that stopped because there really wasn't political champion or leadership organizational structure. So we're going to be looking at, how do we make this effort sustainable in the long run? And those are the conversations we're going to be leading into as well. So it's really been interesting getting out there, and I've been very excited, but everybody that we've met and we've talked to seems to be really on board with all of this working together and coordinating these efforts and helping each other. So that's really exciting for me. Do you want to go ahead?
Thank you. Definitely want to echo, thank you for coming out today. This well-attended lunch is a lot more than we've had at our neighborhood meetings. I'd say probably three, four, or five times it is convenient. During this time, what I like especially are the introductions to questions, because then we get some input on people's ideas. And you don't even need to ask us a question. You can share your ideas, and we can ponder that and use it to help us make our decisions. What's been helpful to me recently is going to the smaller cities, Kuna, Star, and Eagle. Last week, it was to Eagle for their State of the City address. And one of the points that really stood out to me is how concerned Eagle is about their water quantity. And they are getting into a partnership with Suez, Eagle Ranch, Eagle Water, and also Avamore. Avamore has a recycling system of wastewater where the product that they turn out is drinkable quality water, and they put it back into the aquifer. What this team of stakeholders is considering is expanding the aquifer system and recharging it with wells that put good water back into the system, because water quantity is definitely a factor. Last week also, at the Air Quality Board meeting, we had a representative from the Department of Environment, the state's DEQ, and the topic obviously was air, but having that expert there, we got into water quality. And he brought up factors that were being done. At our recent IAC meeting, we had the reality check that our aquifers need to be monitored because the aquifers in Elmore County and the adjoining areas of Ada County and also Twin Falls County are going down very, very rapidly. One of the things that they were exploring that would be a major fiscal challenge was raising the height of Anderson Ranch Dam to store more water. They're also very active in recharging aquifers and rerouting canals, but those are problems that are associated with growth that we also have to factor in. So I look forward to your questions, and please give us a good introduction to those questions. Kelly?
Is anybody interested in limiting growth, or is there a way to limit growth? Like, what happened to my old Boise?
Well, I'll answer that first, and then turn it over to my fellow commissioners. There's definitely a way to limit growth. Moratoriums have been used by the city of Boise when their sewer system wasn't adequate to handle expanding population in a certain area. There's also zoning efforts that can be made where the citizens come forth. Our strongest guideline is though, from the Local Land Use Planning Act found in Title 67, Chapter 65 of the Idaho Code, which tells governing bodies what they shall consider. And we have to take into account overpopulation and crowding. That's one of the big things we have to look at. And if the current zoning laws and comp plans, which are advisory only, comp plan does not have to be followed. It's merely a guide, and that's what the Idaho Supreme Court has said. So moratoriums can be put in, rezoning can put in, discretion by the commissioners in deciding whether to rezone a certain area when a developer comes in can be used to slow down growth.
Oh, I'd like to answer that as well, and then we'll kind of pick up on the intersection with property taxes and I think budgets, because that affects all of your working business. So I think the question is, can we slow growth? But I think, so one of the answers that was given was, can we slow building? And I think there's sort of a two-pronged piece there, because we can change how we build and where we build, but how do you change human behavior? And I think that is the real question. And when I look at jurisdictions around the country, back in the eighties, Austin really did pursue a "if we don't build it, they won't come" strategy, and it turned out to be completely false. So people still came, they were just overwhelmed from an infrastructure perspective. So, you know, that is a hard thing that I think that we are all grappling with. Do certain types of development attract more people to move here? That's a different question. Potentially, they do. I don't know. But ultimately, we're going to have to plan and prepare for what we think is coming because our analyses, Compass's analyses, are already being overprojected. So what they had planned for is already underwater in terms of what's actually happening. So the second piece, and just as it relates to the folks here, if we went back, I don't know if you're able to go back, Mitra, to that pie chart with the green pieces in it. I'm just a firm believer in, you know, willingness to accept the things I cannot change and, you know, the courage to change the things that I can. So we're not going to change the fact that with population growth, we are going to have more child custody cases. We will have more crimes committed. We will have a need to do more of that core central functions of what we do and all of the corresponding pieces at operations, NIT, et cetera, that support those things. So that's that gray piece. We're going to need to do that work, and I know you all have such a pride and ownership in doing it and doing it well. What we're interested in is how can we get at those green pies? And what I'm thinking about here is that intersection with the conversation that's happening at the legislature. So if you haven't been paying attention, there's a few different ideas being floated. One is a complete property tax freeze. There are some cap ideas, and that will certainly affect our budget process, and it is already affecting the conversations that are happening. So my answer to legislators in many ways is, I want to control the things that I can. I want to bend the cost curve on those areas, but I can't do it alone. I need some help from the cities, and potentially, we need some help from the legislature to have some more authority so that we can grow in a more fiscally responsible way. But as you all know, the vast majority of what we do at Ada County is actually mandated, right? We don't get to decide whether we're going to have a court system. We do it, and we try to do it well. And I think the concern that we all have is that if we aren't able to bend that cost curve potentially, and we have this coming down from the legislature, it's just going to degrade our level of service, right? We'll go from 10 months waiting for a child custody hearing to a year and a half. And that's certainly not something I want to see happen on my watch. So with that, I would love to answer any more questions. We'd love to answer any questions you might have. I know a lot of people have questions about what our authorities are. And so don't be afraid, there's no dumb questions. We know this isn't your normal book of business, so don't be afraid to... We know this isn't your normal book of business, so don't be afraid to ask us any questions you might have. Kendra's going to call on you.
That's right. And we will build a wall and charge California. There you go.
So as somebody who's lived here a quarter century, the daily impact I've seen that hits us the most ties into your coordination with ACHD and its traffic. Have you thought about some plans or proposals to take to them and to the cities about ways to address that? Because I, I don't think a lot of people are moving here for our bus service. They're moving here because they don't have to use the bus or the subway and they want that freedom of an individually owned car. So what are we looking at to kind of address that as we go forward? Cause I think that touches everybody who works for the county and everybody who lives in Ada County.
I'll start.
If we can just use these enough. Pick it up. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so we're very unique. Um, I don't know how many times, uh, for you all as Ada County employees, people ask you, what are you going to do about those roads? And you have to say, sorry, no, that's not us. We are very unique, um, as an entity that has a completely separate jurisdiction running our roads. And it can make it a little bit complicated because we're making land use decisions and we're relying on another agency to give us information. And I think a great example of that, if, if you've been paying attention, was a, a fairly large development, um, that is still in process and the Kuna area where there's been sort of a ping pong effect happening back and forth between the land use agency and ACHD where one is saying, you have to decide on this, no, you have to decide on this. Um, and they're really a question about where we have the capacity there. Um, I can tell you empirically, uh, before this fiscal impact analysis even comes out, ACHD is way underwater in terms of their ability to provide, um, not just new roads, forget about new roads and expanded capacity, but it's really that ongoing operations and maintenance that gets increasingly expensive. So, um, we are doing our best to work with them and I think one of the pieces that Commissioner Kenyon mentioned around an adequate public facilities ordinance could be something that comes out of this conversation.
David, do you or Meg, do you guys have the numbers on, um, what the, the infrastructure uh, costs are that, um, that ACHD needs right now and on ITD as well? That they're backlog? I, do you, it's, it's a significant amount.
Yeah, so it's, it's somewhere in the ballpark of $250 million, um, uh, you know, in terms of the unfunded portions of the CIP and other, uh, the capital improvements plan and other, other issues that are out there, so.
And ITD is in the billions, so that, yeah, it's really, really behind. One of the things that we're looking at, when we go out and we talk to the cities, the mayors and the council folks, um, they're really trying hard and I know Mayor Chad, or, yeah, Chadwick, who's the new mayor out in Star, they're really trying hard to look at, um, growing their own economic development centers in their own towns. And this is especially true over in Caldwell and Nampa. They've got, um, Amazon, uh, center going in over there. And what's going to happen is if we can really help promote any of that business and retail growth in their own cities, then they're not these bedroom communities in these sprawling subdivisions, basically. They become their own true city. Um, so if we can help them do that, then you're not going to see all of this traffic always having to come from Caldwell or Nampa over to Boise because all the jobs are here. So that's important in these conversations, um, with these, uh, different cities in helping them sort of identify their areas, um, their personality and, and what makes sense for, for them.
Being the third one to answer Ken's question, uh, how are we interacting with ACHD? Uh, we are meeting with them and we're trying to get input. What we've learned from them, um, is if it's not in their five-year plan and a development can fall within that five-year plan and then the road improvements can happen, right now they're facing a leg of 15 years. So developer comes in, files for his building permit, is granted that and starts taking off, it's projected it's going to take 15 years. When I met with some of the developers in the community, they've told me that what we really need is to do what other states are doing and make ACHD apply the money from that development to that development area to begin the road work and not start the development until it's happened. Uh, what they are doing now, not sure how they pulled it off, but, uh, with the impact fees, they are applying extraordinary impact fees to some developments and even though the initial impact fee will not go to that development, any extraordinary fee which matches that fee will go to the development. So it's increased, uh, the impact fees for developers by a factor of 100%, which will be passed on to the buyers. But we interact with them, we try to get input, they have, uh, certain things set and they're an independent agency and that's the reality of it.
And like Commissioner Mr. So they're an independent agency with their own board of commissioners that are elected. And so it, in fact, I think the state of Idaho is the only state that has this model set up. So it, it is challenging.
Does the regional growth plan address affordable housing?
Does the region, yeah, you want to go ahead? I think you can. I don't think they could hear me last time.
So, uh, no and yes.
That's all I was going to say.
Right. Um, you know, what we're, we're, we're looking at here is first trying to knit together everybody's uh, comprehensive planning so that we can, uh, do things differently and again, hopefully bend that cost curve so we don't make, um, potentially expensive choices. And let me, let me give you an example of that and this is really no fault of anybody's, it's just the way it worked out. Um, the West Ada School District growing by leaps and bounds, right? They have 600 new students every year. They've got to figure out where to, where to educate those students. And one of the criticisms that they get is that, well, why aren't you planning ahead? And, and they do try very hard to plan ahead, but it's just happening so fast. Well, they located a school site, um, in an area that was relatively cheap for them to be able to build a new school. However, the, uh, area that they located that school was, um, not something that the city of Meridian had been planning for. So it cost us all a whole lot of money, uh, to then additionally provide services to that area. So I'm going to get to your question. When we make choices like that, it takes away dollars for us to invest in other places. And whether it's the city of Meridian or city of Boise or Ada County, et cetera, um, whether we're thinking about market rate housing or subsidized housing, um, that is not, subsidized housing is not a mandate that we have at the county. It's just simply not something that we, uh, have to do. So if we're going to help get at it in any way, the only way I see us being able to do that is if we can bend this cost curve. But, um, when we have more diversity of housing, more housing options, potentially we will have, um, some what I would call naturally occurring affordable housing. Sense maybe? Okay.
I think, yeah, just for me, I'm encouraging, um, infill, uh, as much as possible without making the traffic and congestion worse because with infill, the services are already there and so the cost then can be more, more affordable. Next question? Come on, people. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just confused on why the developers aren't paying more. They want to build all those houses, then they better build a school for the children who are going to live there.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a very good question. Very good question. And then Mitra too, you're okay? All right.
Okay. It, it's been brought before the legislature for years that school districts should have impact fees so growth will support growth. That hasn't succeeded. I don't think they should let up though. The impact fees for the highway districts is phenomenal. Like I said, it was doubled from one of those projects and a, a recent one by Brighton Corp, uh, their impact fees went from nine million to 18 million, 100% increase. And that's going to be passed on to the buyers. Well, the other thing that we have that has been very beneficial to a growing community is the new construction roll. We do have the revenue coming in and this last year it was a record, uh, of, of over four, $4 million, uh, where, and the way that process works, you have a bare piece of land, it's, it's set with a certain value and then as the improvements come in, starting with the grading, the value of the land increases. Then some of the building takes place and more of the building takes place and that construction roll expands and it gets up to the date of occupancy. So we have that revenue, getting the other ones is, is going to be a balancing process because they're hit with some of these other things, but I'm in favor of doing something so that growth will support, uh, the schools. It's particularly, uh, an interesting analytical experiment when you look at the impact of high density and how many children can be in, say, an apartment complex versus a single residence home. A lot of times that single residence home is going to have a much higher impact fee or more, much higher impact fee, but less impact on the schools. You could have 100 kids in an apartment complex versus two in a home. Uh, and that isn't addressed adequately no matter what.
So just to boil it down, currently impact fees can only be used for public safety. So the schools don't have an ability to, uh, charge an impact fee for schools and it's a huge problem. West Ada just announced they're going out for another bond and they don't have any other options. So it's not, uh, their fault. Um, they have a mandate to provide for a uniform education and when they have 600 students every year who they have to figure out where to put them, they really don't have any other option. So I don't, I don't blame them, it's just the, the cards that they've been dealt. And as it intersects with this property tax conversation, if you go home and take a look at your tax bill, about a third of your tax bill, usually depending on where you are, but roughly a third is going to whatever your, your local school system is. And many of that, much of that is comprised of sort of two different pieces. One is a bond that is for building and two is usually a supplemental levy. And that levy oftentimes is backfilling needs in a local school district that the state is not paying for. And again, it's different depending on where you live, but you voted on all of those typically to support that. Were the state to allow impact fees, one, and I would argue two, adequately fund public education, um, you could see some of that drop off of your tax bill.
So one of the things that we're really fighting for as well, um, we, there's a couple of pieces of legislation over at the legislature that, um, one of them is for us not to be able to collect the entire new construction roll, which would be very, very problematic for Ada County, um, with the rate of growth that we're seeing. So we're really, really fighting that. The other thing is over, over time, the burden, um, of schools, of taxes has been placed on residential property owners to the tune of 70 some percent. Uh, commercial and agriculture are paying very, very little, 20 some percent. And so this has happened, this has progressed over the course of five or six years. Um, so it's really out of kilter and, and again, the burden is on your backs. And so we're really trying hard to get the legislature to put together an interim committee. Um, so we're not just throwing legislation out there and hope something sticks. Um, we want to look at this as a holistic, comprehensive, coordinated approach to really tax reform, uh, because there's a lot of things that have just over the years have that slide and we're really out of kilter. Um, the other thing that we're really helping, trying to do this, um, this year is really helping Bob McQuade's office, Assessor's office, um, get the word out about the circuit breaker program. If you've got folks that you know, um, that really can't afford their taxes, they're elderly, they're disabled, um, et cetera, we've got a really good program and it's not being utilized to the extent that it could be. Um, so we're trying to increase that amount over at the legislature as well.
I'm going to pick on Phil McGrane here. Hi, Phil.
Pick on Phil.
Uh, Phil's team has done just a really fantastic job of analyzing the tax burden and analyzing how, um, the property tax burden has really shifted onto residents because of the rate of growth and he could explain it much better than I can. So I'm going to come on over here and have him share some of that information.
Uh, I will do my best. Um, I've been working very heavily during the legislative session on property taxes. For those of you who are county employees, most of this conversation, you, you probably read about it in the news, but it has a great impact, both as you as residents who pay property taxes, right? As well as county employees because, um, certainly the implications for us at the county, uh, you can easily appreciate wages are one of the biggest expenses that we have as a county. And so discussion of what wages will be next year is closely tied to the discussions of what's going on at the legislature. Um, and as Diana alluded to and, uh, as well as Commissioner Kenyon, um, there is a shift happening. There's a lot of talk about tax shifting, uh, that's going on and it's basically saying one taxpayer take, picking up the burden over another. So the circuit breaker that was mentioned is actually a good example of that. We have a public policy where we say, all right, we're going to pay a portion of property taxes through the income tax to relieve the burden on certain taxpayers because of the hardship that property taxes creates. Um, what we're seeing and it's really most concentrated here in Ada County, more than any other place in the state. The next two counties are Bonneville County, which is Idaho Falls, and Madison County, which is Rexburg there too. It's, and the, the kind of, as it's been laid out, there's two Idahos. There's growing Idaho and there's either stagnant or shrinking Idaho. And there's actually a number of counties that are shrinking, um, who still have all the same burdens that we do. Um, but in the growing areas and in particularly ours, we're seeing property taxes rise much faster than property values. Um, and the reason for that is it's just the marketplace. So it's going back to kind of basic economics, the invisible hand. As residential real, values rise faster than commercial values or faster than agricultural values, um, what happens is because that value goes up and property taxes are based on the value of your home, those people whose homes are rising faster pick up a larger burden. So wherever the median is, so right now the median in terms of assessed value going up is 11% in Ada County. And so depending on where you are on that median, if you're right at the median, your property taxes are going to go up just about the same, like go up evenly with whatever our budgets go up. You're right at that middle mark. But if your home is going up more than that, which many are, then you're actually picking up a burden and typically you would think that means lower value homes are getting some relief, higher value, but all residential is growing faster than commercial and faster than agriculture. So it's all shifting towards residential. Um, so it used to be close to just over 50% of the burden was residential. We're now at 72% is residential. Um, and so we're seeing there was, uh, one particular thing we studied was an individual right near Vista, right? So if you kind of think Rose Hill, kind of Vista area, a 91-year-old gentleman, he's lived in the same house for a really long time. Uh, he had a 48% increase in his property taxes last year. And that's after having a 30-plus percent tax increase the year before and a 25% tax increase the year before that. One of the things that we see, we did a heat map of all parcels in Ada County. It's not just Ada County versus Canyon County versus other, within Ada County, if you're in an area that's being revitalized like Vista, you, those values are going up because there are people who are really interested in living close to downtown. If you're in the north end, property taxes are going up because people are willing, who are moving in are willing to pay more for that house than the current homeowner who's sitting in there. And as a result, they are by those price tags and you hear about that through high home sales, right? The MLS is seeing record numbers in terms of home sale prices. Um, and, uh, where we are with our values, so the current homeowner's exemption is set at effectively $200,000. A home worth $200,000 is where that you see the maximum relief from the homeowner's exemption. Anything more than that, there aren't that many properties left in Ada County worth $200,000 or less. So the group that's actually picking up the largest share of the burden is the homes between $200,000 and $300,000. Um, if you're oddly, the people who are seeing less growth, if you own over a million dollar home, you probably saw a property tax reduction. Uh, uh, so it's kind of one of these strange things where there's this target group. Yeah, this isn't what people, you would think it would kind of be evenly spread and it's not. Um, so there's a lot, one of the biggest.
$300 homeowners out there?
Yeah. And if you are, can you, yeah, let us know. Uh, um, uh, one of the biggest challenges, this is complicated and so we're trying to work through the legislature, but it's tough in a, in a situation where there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of strong demand because there are very real instances where people do need property tax relief and we need to figure out something. And so things like a property tax freeze sound very desirable. One of the challenges we have is when a issue like a property tax freeze is discussed, is it freezes the county's budget, meaning we don't do wages, we don't do other things, no new positions, no real way to respond to growth. Um, but it doesn't freeze property taxpayers' bills. And so we looked at it, had we froze the budgets last year, uh, 82% of residents in Ada County would have still seen property taxes increase, some as much as 40%. And I don't know about you, but that doesn't sound like property tax relief to me. Um, so we have to work on things like the circuit breaker and others to really figure out, um, how to manage this. And I think this fits well within the presentation and the conversation today is that's where we are today. I'm, I'm only looking a year out. I'm not even forecasting to 2025 or 2040 is this isn't. I'm not even forecasting to 2025 or 2040 is this isn't issue that other states have faced as states become more urbanized and we're set to grow at a faster rate than everywhere else in the state. And so how do you manage this growth as it ties in? And then how do you fund government services that come along with that? And I think there's a lot of dialogue going on exactly to that, just philosophically. There's kind of an underlying idea that, and all of you in the room can kind of challenge this, Senator Risch made a really good comment last week when he was in town. The assumption on property taxes is that the value of your property is a reflection of your ability to pay. And in many instances, we can identify that that doesn't hold true, right? And interestingly, in what Senator Risch pointed out, he said, this is the only tax that is based on your debt, right? Most of you probably don't actually own your homes. You have a mortgage on your homes, but you pay property taxes based on the full value of the home. And so we're trying, we're being tested here as values are really rising in our county. Hopefully that was helpful.
Yeah, appreciate that.
So let's make this real again as well as it relates to this presentation because one of the services that we deliver and everybody who's both involved in delivering that service and has utilized that service maybe has a little bit of PTESD and I'm caught talking about driver's license. We budgeted last year to get started on a second driver's license location. Now, that is because we are growing as a community and we're also geographically moving further and further west. So the sheriff's office and the assessor's office worked well together to figure out where's the best location for us to be able to have people go there so they're not spending more time on our roads, we can co-locate and provide better service. The reality that we're facing is that we need to do that because those employees are in a really difficult position. Our citizens are not very happy, I just got a text about it this morning. But if our property taxes freeze or even if there's a cap because we have so many other needs to address, this isn't a threat, it's just a reality that we likely will not be able to staff that facility. It's just a reality because we have so many mandated services and that's a level of service. So I guess it's important for you guys to understand as we walk into budget, sort of the bind that we're in, why this conversation is critical so that we can bend that cost curve. And if you happen to know any legislators, give them a holler.
So we want to get you all back to work at a good time. Just wanted to thank everybody for coming today and our doors are open. You can always, if you have suggestions, ideas, call us, email us, we are really interested in hearing from you. But I'm going to bring this back full circle to where Mitra started in the PowerPoint. And that really is why we all live here and it's really about our core values. This is an awesome place to live and we want to keep it awesome. It goes to the very first question, you know, we're growing, but is there anything we can do about it? What we can do about it is we can continue to be kind to each other, we can continue to help each other, we continue to be good neighbors for each other. And certainly as Ada County employees, we can certainly role model that for the rest of us. We're 2,000 strong, close to 2,000 strong. And so if we embrace those core values and we teach and we help other people that move here to embrace our core values versus their, maybe they're bringing their angst here from, you know, a place that was not as nice and people are honking their horns and not waiting till you get out of the crosswalk and all of those things, you know, that's our job, I think, is we can be the holder of those core values and we can role model those. So thank you all very much for coming. It's awesome to see you all and we should do more of this. Thank you.